So I'm going to call to order the school committee meeting of August 30th, 2021, Lennox Public Schools School Committee meeting. And the first order of business is the hearing of visitors, public comment. I expect that we'll have people who may wish to talk about lacrosse. And if that's the case, we can hold that till we actually get to the lacrosse discussion. If there's anybody else, and by the way, for those of you at home watching this, and I hope there's a few of you there. The owl is not working tonight. So speakers from the audience, you may hear them. They're going to have to come up and sit up front, speak loudly, but we haven't got the owl technology working appropriately at this moment. So I would ask members of the public who may wish to speak to come up, sit and speak loudly, because that's probably the only way that people at home are going to hear. So is there any public comment? And identify yourselves.
Hello, I am Mary Jane Matina and a longtime resident of Lennox Public Schools. This is three kids who are Lennox High School alumni. And I'm here with Darlene Pauli tonight, whom we all know as the Director of the Community Center, to tell you about projects that I think the Lennox Public Schools might be very interested in and could be very beneficial to the kids and to the students, to the students and to the faculty. A little bit over a year ago, I learned about something called the MIT Age Lab. And when I first saw this Google search, I thought, oh, this is great. I'll learn more about biology or chemistry to age it. But once I started looking over the MIT Age Lab website, I realized that the lab does not, the MIT Age Lab does not deal with those aspects of aging. It deals primarily with the intersection of technology and aging. It deals with how the older demographic can impact commerce and the economy. And I got to know the founder and the director of the Age Lab a little bit. His name is Joe Coughlin. And he is, as I say, he founded the Age Lab about 12 years or so ago. And one of his staff members that I also have spoken with on a number of occasions by the name of Taylor Paxkennick. And I learned that what the Age Lab has done is it's focused on things like caregiving, how it can help caregivers to function better with dealing with the people that they're taking care of and taking care of themselves at the same time. It has an interesting program called the 85 and over leadership group. This is actually for people 85 and older who want to interact back and forth and figure out how they can contribute to the community. And this was the one thing, the next one is the thing that really made me sit up. They have something called the Omega Project. And Darlene can hand you a one pager that they have developed that tells you a little bit about the Omega Project. The Omega Project is an intergenerational activity that the Age Lab sponsors. It's for high school students, but it also accepts some exceptional middle school students as well. And I've participated in three of these Omega chats. These are phone calls that Taylor Paxkennick organizes on a monthly basis. They're about an hour long. And they're mostly focused on the kids who participate in the Omega Project. As you might guess, it's got a heavy representation from the greater Boston area, but there are kids from across the country that participate in this. There have been kids on the call from Georgia, from California, from Chicago, from New York City, from upstate New York. And I've really been impressed by these kids and their enthusiasm and the projects that they have developed. And one of the, a couple of the inducements for these kids is not only can they potentially intern at the Age Lab at MIT, and that's a little bit skewed towards the people in the Boston area, but I've been thinking about this and I realized that we have a lot of Lennox High alumni who live in the greater Boston area, so it's not, it's not out of the question. But these kids can also compete for $5,000 college scholarships if they put a project together that's successful. And the school gets something like, to support these projects, about $1,500. And I think that this is something that can be brought to the attention of Lennox students and faculty, because there are, on a couple of these chat phone calls, there have been faculty members who have participated. The kids, as I say, are fantastic. They're really enthusiastic. They come up with great ideas. They interact very well. There's no, there's no nasty competitiveness. And as I say, there is the possibility of getting to know the MIT Age Lab people better, the possibility of a college scholarship and support also at the school. So Darlene, I spoke to Darlene about this, and she has spoken to Mike Knibl on it. And basically, I'm here to answer any of your questions about it. It seems like it might be a good thing for the National Honor Society, but I think it should be open to any kid at the high school who might want to do something like this. I also found out that a few years back, a student from Greylock participated in this, put together an after school arts program for seniors in the community. They would come to Greylock and go into the art studio and do whatever they did. And she eventually got a $5,000 college scholarship out of this. So it's out there, but unfortunately, it's a, it's a well-kept secret. And, and I'd really like to see it come into Lennox, if that's possible, and get your input on this.
Thank you. If I could just add, so of course, maybe if you've been following, introduce you to our new superintendent, Dr. Mark Bostland.
Hello.
Who has a very, very thick agenda of a lot of new initiatives, as he's new to the district, and we have a whole bunch of things. But I certainly believe at some point, when he has a minute to breathe, then he will look at it and have some conversations, because I think like everything, it's sort of picking and choosing which things we're doing, and it would incorporate, it would involve so many people. And Mike is also, I know, working on a lot of his initiatives that he's talking to Dr. Bostland about. So hopefully, that will be part of the list of things to look at, and then we have to figure it out. I think any partnerships with universities and partnerships that give students an opportunity for leadership and, and learning is wonderful. We have in the past, the Community Center had liaisons from the school, interning, National Honor Society, interning at the Community Center with seniors, helping them, it's not the Omega Project, but it is working with seniors to help them to navigate technology and communicate with their loved ones. And I think that's been an extremely positive initiative. I know, because my daughter also did it. And I think that experience of intergenerational work is, is wonderful and something I know is, is within our goals. We just have to be fair to Dr. So I apologize for the technical issues we're having here tonight. Correspondents, I have had a younger request of correspondence for people supporting the lacrosse program. You know, I don't have those names in front of me. Some correspondence regarding lacrosse. School committee meeting minutes of August 16th. School committee meeting minutes of August 16th. What's that going to be? The discussion. Okay, during that, we'll call for a vote, I think, because we're kind of, you know, we have a person, I think we probably do each other a real call. So, or you can ask.
Hi.
Hi. David. Okay, we'll move into that report. Dr. Bostland.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we have a few things on our report tonight. First and foremost is our school reopening plans. And when we talk about school reopening plans, certainly with our COVID plans, but also talk about things beyond COVID, right? It's important certainly to discuss these things, but I also want to make sure that we're giving our teachers and our administration the ability to also share, so the teaching and learning initiatives that have gone on too. I don't want to always feel like all our planning is just about COVID. Certainly, we are working on COVID always, but I think we need to look beyond COVID. There's going to be a day after COVID, and we won't sell anything to that. So, now being said, we did share our COVID updated plans. We had a lot of folks reach out to us and ask us what our plans were. In addition, we were probably a little late getting them out. However, we must share for everybody's sake that the information coming to us is rebreaking off from D E S I, and it's also changing. To win, I have a meeting tomorrow night, or call tomorrow afternoon, sorry, with the Commissioner, where again, will be yet another change probably being shared with the Super University of the State. So, you know, we'll sit tight and wait for that, but that's kind of how this, the stream making has kind of gone. And so we hung up and waited, and we had guidance, and then we started moving forward, and then we're told to kind of push pause, because there's going to be more guidance. So I feel your frustration, and I share that I probably share frustration oftentimes. So, you know, I'm just being fully transparent and trying to move forward. One of the things that I didn't share with the committee, I mean, early on though, was to say, let's not wait for D E S I to put out information, because we were afraid this was going to be our reality. So I applaud them for being proactive and trying to get on ahead and take steps to put together a masking policy, so that, again, we beat D E S I to punch that, and then basically offering the same kind of policy that we already made locally. So I think we've done the right thing, and I'm glad that we were out ahead of that, so that we get down to parent. But it is important that we share our plan. Again, I'll have to apologize, you know, we're struggling with technology issues tonight, and we're struggling with a few of them around the district. We have a new technology director who's had a great job, but he's only been on the job for two weeks, and his technician literally just started today. So we tried to get the website updated, that's a work in progress. But knowing that that was something that is a bit of a heavy fuel for us, we decided to charge ahead and to the school messenger where we shared out our mitigation plan for the return to school. Again, the plan was going to continue to evolve over time, since the, based on the best information we have right now, and we're going to be studying the emerging data information around COVID with our local health experts, also our joint leader, the Information Committee, that is going to talk about issues surrounding reopening. In addition to that, we also put together a portal, which is a small website, for lack of better description, that also houses all of our administration's COVID information and links to helpful information on caring, so we're more about COVID, how it affects the schools, how they can plan forward in the interests of their children. And a little mitigation plan, again, there's no new mandates that are being imposed, we're just following the suggestions, and being shared by the CDC and others. We're not saying that all kids in school must remain at three feet distance at all time, we're suggesting that when you do that, you can do that when you can. You know, we're going to put forward, we're going to form around teaching and learning as I was also going to say, what's best for kids. And so if working on a group project together is what kids need to do, then there may be a relaxation of distancing during that time. So we also talked about sharing the nickel, if we want kids to be able to have abnormal school experience as we can, and we're trying to balance that also with certain, certainly not easy making these decisions, but we're really trying to balance those things as we can. So I would, again, encourage you, if you haven't seen those things, please check, I sent that school messenger over the weekend. If for whatever reason you don't have that, I'd be happy to reshare that with anybody that's missing. Beyond COVID, we also have a lot of transition planning that's going on. And so it's been really important to us to think about how we can bring those students into our community, make them feel welcome, answer some of their questions, concerns, alleviate their fears, and tell them that they make interesting things about our schools. And so we actually did that today, twice over at Morris. We had a briefing day this afternoon, and then this evening, right before we got online here, we had a virtual meeting with new students at Morris, who are choice students or students who live in, they had an opportunity to ask questions of the principals, who did a great job, sharing about, you know, what the experience is like. Kids have homework, or is what is homework going to be like? Do I really get a computer? You know, when do I send my medicine if my kid has allergies and needs to take medicine during school? So parents had a chance to come together, ask those questions, get some answers, and I think that was, you know, well appreciated by the folks that just made the call. Similar sessions are being planned for the high school. We have one coming up tomorrow night. General Student Body in the middle, Thursday night, the new students as well. So our high school team, oh, sorry, Wednesday night for the new students as well, I had this book. So they have two back-to-back nights for students at the high school to ask questions, get questions answered, give you questions around the COVID, or hopefully for our new students, it's also four questions around the learning, and the opportunity to engage in others and athletics and all that, and to make school joyful and fun. So they have an opportunity to ask all those questions and give the answers that they're looking for the next two nights. The fall sports season has begun. Today was literally the first scrimmage, right, for the North Star team? I don't know if they, they want to know, but I guess it's going to.
I don't know if they can still hear it, right?
So, yeah, we're ahead, but we officially keep score, but, you know, for those who are unofficially keeping score, that's the word. But we're really excited about the fall sports. I was encouraged for years, and I really love fall sports. It's such an exciting time, and I'm really happy that our outdoor athletes, without wearing masks, spectators don't need masks outdoors. It will be different to be indoor sports, we'll be volleyball this season, players and spectators will need to wear masks. But luckily, so, so long as nothing changes tomorrow, those folks who come to games indoors, there's also no capacity limits or those types of things. So anyone who's coming to watch volleyball, volleyball, this time. So I'm really excited about fall sports. I can't wait to get to a couple of games and see our athletes, and know that they're going to get back to the field, be back a little bit, so I'm excited about that.
It's, I'm sure. After all, it's just good to see everybody. Oh, my gosh. And I just did want to comment on the reopening plans, because I know there was concern with your sort of, that kids talk a bit much. And I would, I would, you know, it supports this, and I think we also manage kids, so we do want kids to be allowed to talk a bit much. I know they're going to be, the desk is, you know, pretty showy, but lunch is going to work, and it's a pretty safe situation. It's going to be centers, centers, centers of five feet. At least 35 feet or something like that in cafeteria. But there will be kids, you know, on either side of the view, and I'd hate to see a situation where kids couldn't talk. That's because it's one of the few opportunities that could happen for actually, so I wanted to highlight that. I just want to say thank you for giving us that data, which is very changing. It's your, your memo that we're making, it's the House of Representatives. Yeah, I do think that the memo that we've been out to, it was, it was, a lot of, a lot of things. On the transition, like I just want to also thank you on that, because it was something that the teaching planning group talked about, was the ability, as the planning went from being a person to being Zoom or whatever, we realized we had an opportunity to maybe help move transitions of the kids, and David had mentioned this, so, you know, it's a room to get an opportunity for those school choice kids who are new, incoming sixth graders, incoming kids at Morris, some pre-grads, and, 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 and space for kids to, maybe get some questions answered, formally, that are on their mind, but they're afraid, you know, to go into school and send them over to me. Why? Just to stop talking, we've got to be, it's just a routine thing to make sure that we get opportunities to pass, because I think, not everyone's, just as we found during COVID, we get much greater attendance, speeding, there'll be more people who will avail themselves of that opportunity to ask questions in Zoom format from up there at home, prior to their job getting into school, and anybody who wants to, and, 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 what's going on. So, okay, that's what I want to say.
Just about the, what the policy. One is with respect to the distancing indoors. I appreciate what you said about how, you know, this is not a mandate, and if something learning needs to be gotten closer to that, and it will. I'm worried that that's not what the policy says, and, and that maybe teachers, well, maybe parents and especially teachers, might be confused. The way that the policy is written, it says all, it says everyone will maintain a distance of at least three feet indoors, and ever possible. And so, you know, just to take an example, if students gather around a table and watch a science experiment happen, that strikes me as in violation of the bullet, or even just as classrooms are laid out, you know, I know especially in the younger age, typically people would be sitting at the same tables, much, much like we are choosing to do here this evening. Is, is this how kids will be set up in their classrooms, or will they all be spaced in compliance with the bullet?
So, thinking about, just to be clear, it's not a policy, right? This is our own plan, and we're not mandating distancing in the schools, right? We're suggesting it was possible. Now, there would be times when it's not possible still, and that might be the standard we're in. And so in many of the classrooms in Morris, kids are sitting at tables, right? And so therefore, you know, they'll be closer than the, you know, three feet or five feet. The big issue around spacing, particularly at Morris, the thing goes around eating in the cafeteria and all that, right? So, for the majority of the school day, children are going to need masks, and that's the mask break, there are, because that's our, so, those are the areas where, again, I think that we can, to run a table with scientific experimentation, we do have, that's good teaching. And so if it doesn't read as clear, we can always go back and, you know, modify the language, but, you know, like the principals, to write in on, you know, how they are turning, and I also was sure to make sure to them that it was clear that we are not imposing any sort of mandate around distancing. We're saying that, you know, when it's playing really well, and, you know, when instruction has to happen, that sustains us getting closer than that from mask, and that's, that's, that's just, so that's the way that I interpret it, and then if my team is, but it's not the way that it reads to others.
I, I totally appreciate that. And then second question, just with respect to lunch, I am concerned by how sort of casually we pass orders, if we describe formation as just sort of a common sense arrangement. Here we're talking about the cafeteria, and the teacher will be seated at, and at, at desk, five feet apart, all facing the same direction. So from a socializing perspective, and even if there's no policy saying they can't talk, it seems certainly isolating and unconducive to social interaction. And if we feel it's necessary, if the principals feel it's necessary, then so be it. I just want to underscore that, you know, already by going to masking, in almost all situations, we are adopting a kind of approach that is far more restrictive than what most developing countries are, are adopting in their schools. And again, I want to just ask, what, first of all, do we have any reason to believe that when people all face the same direction, for instance, instead of being able to talk to each other as we all, like, when we eat? Is there any actual basis for that? And, and what is the guideline by which people decide when kids can have school lunch again?
So I think, again, the idea was, I was from a school, saying that, you know, we have some concerns, and all sorts of concerns, and we've always been dealt with a lot of children staying at tables unmasked, very much. And so the principal reached out and said, okay, if we have the students, it'd be, set the difference over arrangements very much, whether we did. I said, do you think that's just the best interest of the kids at this time? And they said, obviously, for everything, we understand from talking with our local health experts, that not the area is supposed to have a very short spike, so this would be something that short-lived. And I'm hoping that, again, through our continuing work with Children's Management Committee, we continue to talk about what we think that it's good to go back to understanding options. Yeah, it's definitely not optimal for socialization, right? And in some ways, it could encourage kids to kind of raise their voice more so. So, I mean, it's not perfect, but I think that I'm trying to be supportive of the staff and the administration as a whole, allowing them to, 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 you know, the, you know.
I'm trying to believe in the point, but did anyone in the public talk meetings say that we should go to? Before we ask them, we can go away from it. Did anyone in the public talk meetings advise that it should be taken consideration?
So the question was never posed, it was, you know, it's hard, it's a moving target. So the conversation happened historically, you know, and even once discussed, changes over time, based on, you know, how transmission rates change and how locations change. So again, the number one advice was try and do all that you can to encourage vaccination. Secondly, if we're going to masking, and then when it makes sense, we'll get spacing. Those are kind of like the three big ticket items, but we know the first two are the number one, we need to try to, you know, we're looking around the other places around the country, now vaccination may be different, so, you know, context matters, but we are seeing outbreaks in schools, you know, who are eating different configurations, or classroom configurations, and they're not being masked. So again, we're trying to look at all this data, and talk to our folks, and then also work with the Children's Management Committee, to also make decisions that we think makes this work. Can I just pick up on one, what I wanted to say? So is the general feeling that if we didn't arrange the desks kind of in pseudo lunchroom table arrangements, that, you know, where we have similar distancing, but every person would be facing each other, you know, you'd have these sort of groups of kids facing each other with that same distance? Was the feeling that that would not, that our current arrangement would be preferable to arranging to such an arrangement?
Sure, cafeteria tables will fit, right? You can't get the amount of spacing with the cafeteria tables.
No, I don't mean with the tables, I mean with the desks.
With the desks, so kids face each other.
Or configure, you know, such as groups of, of kids facing each other, and, you know, so someone's, you know, a child's back would be your child's back, five, five, five feet apart, but they're, but they're, but they would also be five feet apart facing each other, to have these sort of units of kids facing each other to increase socialization.
So during the pandemic, or if you're not vaccinated and you're not masked, especially, and I just worry, because I'm in charge of all 300 children and their safety, that the virus spreads airborne. So trying to ensure that we have the right spacing, that is how I needed to remove the cafeteria tables. And I just want to be clear that the Lennox Public School District is doing routine COVID safety checks. Last year, it was known as bull testing. I know that is going on to all parents. Please sign up as soon as possible, because really, my plan is just to get the school year going, and once our testing starts, then reassess the situation and do more of a normal lunch period. But I, I truly believe we just need to start the school year off being safe, taking all the precautions that we can possibly take, get our routine COVID safety, testing underway, and go from there. And so that is, it was not an easy decision to make, trust me. However, I just truly feel at this time, watching the community knowers, that just start off school and then reassess, like we're going to reassess everything else, the masking, then go back to our cafeteria tables. This, this was really not the decision I wanted to make, but it was the right decision to start off school.
I think the one point, you were saying, this was the safest way to do it, I mean, look around the table, right, how, or how do you do more than that, but, but, it would be, it would be very strange, but all.
And don't find feet apart a face, it would be a direction to cut down on, on, the risk. As a parent, that, I know that you put their rights behind, you know, but I do think the language might be, you know, that does, and it's apparent, I was hoping to look at that from an American impression, that this is able to be, to be followed, to follow behind, and not, you know, I would think, you know, as a parent, I would have, I would ask. Um, I would think, um, you know, as a parent, I would have, I mean, if that's what the mask, I feel like they are, uh, or I Google picture those, uh, my second point be, even that the, I'm willing to write as such, when it gives teachers or staff members, we're going to do things differently in classroom class. So, if we have a teacher who is really comfortable, or all doing research, dot class, we hope they have kids involved. Uh, or, like you say, talking about, um, more from the mouth, being, you know.
And we can definitely, you know, form a, uh, yeah, we're trying to strike the right balance of non-regularity, not telling the teachers how to teach ours, and giving them flexibility, but if you need to, at least they're willing to do it. Uh, but the expectation is that they teach the curriculum too. So, but if that calls for certain projects, then we should be following that practice. Yes, we're opting out and saying, I'm not going to do, you know, what isn't the curriculum, because I have time and resources. So, I think, you know, we're trying to give them flexibility, um, we're trying to work with their concerns. But this is a lot of hearing that we heard, uh, whether the white inbox has been flooded, I don't know about your inbox, but I suppose who, I said, I have grave concerns about, um, the fact that up until lately, we had, there being a public district concerning COVID, kind of would be, including, um, distancing the school, um, some folks didn't even know about masking, um, all kinds of kids. Um, so we want to make sure we get those involved. I mean, I know that, you know, many kids walk around with a three foot pool little at all times. Make sure that no one, you know, stays out of their bowl, no, we're not doing that. So, that's, I think, the balance of trying, it's trying to strike. So, again, the thing, the language feel is not, um, striking the right tone. We certainly, you know, come back together as an administrative team, you know, work on that. I think that if we want to make sure, you know, we respond to parents who are asking us lots and lots of information, lots of detail. I also want, I'm beginning to start thinking about teaching and learning and not doing like constant calls and emails about COVID. You know, we have to get beyond that, we have to, this is becoming something that's quite, quite a lot of, we're trying to, um, trying to keep sharing this information, to try and get to do what we can based on what we know right now, make the best of this. Uh, we need to begin, work on the language a little bit.
I would like to, I can make, very much appreciate your comment, thank you. Really in support of this approach, I think, very welcome to, um, support or administrative, I will try to, probably, um, thanks, I want to, I know this issue, and, um, I forgot what the last, first thing is very much, I think, there are many other important issues. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, you're awesome. Thank you, you've accomplished.
That's a good one, um, you know, I think we're in good shape.
I just want to offer just two comments that might be helpful towards looking. Um, one is, I'm concerned by how much of the decision-making at this point seems to be driven by how many parents are following, filling up email boxes. I certainly think we need to listen carefully to all of the concerns that parents raise. But I also know, for instance, from a very good survey, uh, that the conducted Dr. Goslin, that distancing was, I believe, the lowest rate. Most, most parents did not rate distancing as, as most, or even whatever the second option was. And so, you know, in, in a community of 700, the number of parents who fill up an inbox is not necessarily reflective census. And importantly, I don't want us to get into a bidding war. I feel like a little bit last year, we ended up in a contest where the school committee said, well, we put a lot of parents that say X. And so, we got more parents rallied to come the next week and say Y, and then maybe more parents come that could say Z. You know, and at some point, particularly if we are emphasizing that, going to all the public health guidance, the public health guidance needs to, um, it needs to actually be, so I hope we'll, we'll stay focused on that. And then the second thing is just a little bit of a concern site that with the optimism that Delta spike might be short. Um, it might, we also may barely be at the start of it. And there are plenty of public health experts who have said this, that there are huge seasonal factors, and we could be in the future. That looks more like last winter. I mean, how far into the Delta spike we are right now compared to other places we've seen, we could be at 10X. And so, while I, while I like to share your optimism, I, I hope that we are planning and making policy on the basis of pessimism and asking, how are we going to make sure students can enjoy lunch? If in fact, the rate is not lower than today's rate until March, because that, that is certainly.
Appreciate the feedback, thank you. Um, you know, I think, as we're also doing this too, and I put this in very clearly, um, in part of our portal too, that, you know, how we make decisions, so that people understand the process. I mean, we just listened in, um, menu surveys, we're also talking to our local officials, also, um, in the Labor Management Committee. Um, you know, and we'll look at all of these pieces, and that, and then explicitly to share that we're not going to make decisions based on majority rules, um, you know, that we're going to take into account many factors when we make a decision. We do want to hear people's voices, um, but we're not going to get into a COVID volleyball match where, you know, we're going to keep telling this thing back to us, you know, that, um, it's not a trend. So, again, we're trying to reach out to, to hear what people are saying, um, responding to people's voices. I think it is important that we meet each of our families, um, and then respond from many jobs for us, um, compared to myself. And so, I have concerns about that, and I'm going to, with their days, we'll fight this as much as, you know, as early as possible. So, we're trying to be as responsive as we can, it's not easy, uh, you know, we're really trying to, to serve community masters as we're trying to work through this. So, um, you know, I guess we're looking at grace, and we'll continue to work on it, um, we'll remember that we have the conversations. Um, but the important parts of us, and I think that's what I heard in your comments, there's a piece of stuff looking forward. I think that's what's important to us also tonight. That's why I also invited our principals here tonight to share a little bit about reopening plans that have nothing to do with COVID. It's not just about some of the amazing things that are going on, some of the big plays that you have for your buildings. Give us, I know maybe optimism isn't the, uh, we'll talk to the brain right now, but some other ways to be optimistic about opening schools so that we can look ahead and say, you know, here's some great things, I'm really happy about the school year, uh, you'll think about some great things, you know, what is going forward too. So, um, why don't we start, right, you know, I think it's a tough touch, it's a few answers, why don't we start with the high school, and then we'll come back. All right, so, Mr. Knebel, I wanted to share just a quick overview of some of the work that we've gone on to, uh, reopening schools, I heard a lot of them, yes, um, I think that, I need to, so, so I, I started with, um,
you know, my first item on my summer wins list, um, is that we prepared the school to go from two 40-foot trailers stacked to the ceiling with furniture, to all that furniture is now removed and back in the classrooms. Um, so I have to, you know, congratulate our awesome custodial staff at LMMA test, Jeff, you know, Nick Saldorini, Mike Bowen, Dale Armstrong, Don Bocciety, and Hayden Twiggs, that, uh, they emptied those 40-foot containers. And not only did they put the furniture back together, because anything that had reusable legs came off in those trailers, but they cleaned all the classrooms, stripped and waxed all the floors, cleaned all the rooms, returned the teacher's desk that were wandering throughout the building, because we had spread ourselves apart for, um, the six-foot social distancing. And, uh, and, you know, prepared the outside grounds as well, where our sports team, uh, began the season last week with some really awesome fields. Um, so that's our first win. The second win is approximately, uh, 54 students, almost 15% of our, our school, grade seven through 12 this year, uh, participated in math or ELA summer preparation programs. And the participating students prepared for math or ELA from grade seven content all the way to AP in humanities, ABE Cal, and humanities, and math side. So, not only were we running immediate education programs, but we were also running prep programs. So, I'm calling them all pre-learned students that are coming back to us, uh, later this week. Two of our step program students that we don't hear about often, um, they were part of the graduation cohort. Aaron Loftus began working at Marivol this summer. His duties included taking care of the driving range, as well as cleaning and storing golf carts. Marivol would like him to continue on throughout the winter in another capacity. Um, and he also received his driver's permit this summer. Sadie, his sister, Sadie Loftus, has been working at Loews, Sadie stocking and screening the shelves. And the owners are very happy to honor her. Besides working, Sadie and Aaron also volunteered at the Lenox Library, where they organize magazines, punch library cards, and did some shelling as well. And, uh, Aaron also helped out at our schools, and on that Morris, working outside on the grounds, as well as LMMA test, weeding some of our gardens. Over the summer, teacher-wise, Bert Kaminsky participated in the Perkins Teacher Externship at Berkshire Health Systems. She had the opportunity to observe over 50 entry-level and professional healthcare-related fields. Many professionals shared their interest in becoming guest speakers for her anatomy course, which now is offered for a college credit, um, by SMHU. And, uh, they would be willing to take us on post-COVID for field trips and job shadowing opportunities. Um, Miss Kaminsky learned that it's essential that we explicitly discuss and teach employability skills in order to ensure our students are both college and career-ready. And she plans to build employability with character skill objectives in her daily lessons this year. Um, Heather McNeese, who is new to us this year, replacing Ann Barber in our business, business department, uh, she participated in an externship that was split between Marivol, Berkshire's, and B and G restaurant supply. Heather's mentor, Matt Marivol, was a former marketing student of hers from Pecan, who is now Director of Marketing for Berkshire Property. She was brought up to speed on the use of digital and social media in marketing. Both had so much to share regarding their need to pivot during the pandemic. It completely changed how they do business now, is now growing very difficult to find employees. So, when asked what they valued most in a prospective employee, they said, strong communication skills and willingness to learn, and being part of a team. Everything else can be learned. So, there's two teachers who are preparing us for that career pathway. So, the exciting news is Lenox Memorial Middle and High School is seeking to be designated, um, as a pathway innovation, innovation pathway school from the Department of Ed. There's basically two critical need sectors in Berkshire County that require workforce development, healthcare, social assistance, and business and finance. In collaboration with Heather Shumey Williams from Berkshire Workforce Board, Sarah Romeo and Pam Murray were doing their planning for the pathways that will launch in March 2022. They have applied for Destiny Innovation Pathway designation, and the initial round went out this summer, and we'll hear very shortly. And then there's a second round for October that we're planning to be right on the forefront of that application process as well. Pretty exciting.
It's very exciting, David. Thank you. Are you able to share some of the offerings on our end, Morris?
For the new school, meeting members, and families of the Lenox Public School District, I want to share with you highlights from the summer, from the summer of the work teachers and I have done to prepare for the, for students this fall. Many teachers participated in professional development ranging in topics from STEAM education, integrating logos into your classroom, pedagogy and instructional practices that enhance student learning in math, and moving man how to use differentiated math stations. And several staff completed workshops relating to renewing their teacher licenses. Morris had 12 staff members who provided learning opportunities for about 60 students this summer. These students continued with their reading development and improved their math fact fluency. Each grade built on a previous grade, and being proficient with your math facts helps ease the transition to the next grade. And I echo what, um, Mr. Knebel said, the custodians did a remarkable job moving all of our furniture back into the classrooms while continuing with their thorough cleaning of the building. And as many of you are aware, the LCC used our building this summer as well. For me, it was a nice way to continue to interact with our students over the summer. Summertime is a busy time for administrators. We reflect on the previous year and plan for the upcoming year. Cheryl and Zaratsky and I spent time planning for the implementation of the Second Step curriculum. On Wednesday, teachers will learn how to implement the newest edition of Second Step. All classroom teachers receive the most recent program, which also includes a bullying component that is set to be implemented in the spring. The Second Step curriculum builds a positive, inclusive culture while developing social and emotional competencies. We learned last year that having students in small cohorts was very successful academically. Our year-end benchmark data indicated that most students are reading on grade level. I spent time with the math and reading specialists creating a plan to enhance our small group instruction. And as Dr. Goslin said earlier today, I met our new, um, kindergarten students and their families, and I'm looking, um, forward to meeting all the other students on Thursday.
Maintaining those reading scores, I think, is going to be a small feat, so, you know, your team is going to be more of a job, I mean, really something to grab up for our kids to get the ground learning in, in all respects. All right, so, um, the next item on the Superdinner Report is an update on, um, asbestos incident, um, that happened at the high school. So, um, after the horrible storm on Re, uh, we had a small, um, kind of debris was noticed, uh, during inspection of the windowsill, uh, in room number 51 at the, the high school. Uh, the amount of debris, you know, it was not specific, it was hard to tell if it was or wasn't, uh, regulating, uh, but we just had a product of, it was a caution, you know, and that's how we deal with this kind of event. Um, the amount was, was tiny. Um, I would say that it looked probably like, um, like dried brown, um, brown entrails, or maybe like, got trapped in the corn, um, in its size. Um, but it was hardly any other tea grains, uh, so if you were to put them into a small one-quarter teaspoon measure, um, they would hardly make a dent in that, that measure. So, I guess maybe, maybe there was a 16th or 32nd of a teaspoon, it's hardly been given to me. Uh, but, again, we still want to make sure we're following our newly enacted response plan. Uh, and they definitely happened, and this was the perfect situation for us to use that new plan. Uh, we wish we had used it so soon, like, the audience would have known we did. Uh, everything went off without a hitch. We called in our, right, at the contractor, Eco Genesis, they came out, they said, you came over to, we didn't know, why don't we call Jav, who's coming does the actual radiation? Jav responded the same day, they came in the, they were having a roof degree, and noticed that there was about a one-inch section of, we know that, um, there was no cotton applied to the, um, it's that section of cotton, it's cotton, we made sure that it was, you know, no doubt. And then, um, all that was going on, Eco Genesis, um, performed continuous scanalamin, um, during which you got, uh, the results that, um, you know, showed that there was no, um, basically concern. The amount of fiber per centimeter was, uh, well below industry standards. So, um, it was a small event, it was dealt with quickly and efficiently, um, you know, for the energy movement forward, and I think that, um, we're pretty good, good shape. And that was not a little awful story to have this summer by any stretch. And, um, you know, some walkthroughs, so check out the windows was all over this summer, and we took no other business. So, um, we feel cautiously optimistic at this point, that, um, we've earned, uh, a minimum of hope in there. Um, and we're just continuing to look at other options as well. I think the next step really, if you're talking in the windows, uh, of the, what we call, coffee around the exterior, and flashing when we know the walls, um, so that now we have kind of a barrier on both sides of, of, you know, mobile opportunity for wind to infiltrate, um, within those spaces. So, what happens is it just kind of sneaks into these long gaps and cracks, and the regulating is in the, um, the walls, still in the blocks, which kind of forms like a cylinder, and so it's kind of packed with this, um, which kind of forms like a cylinder, and so it's kind of packed with this, you know, some flooding as well. So we think that, again, behind the outside, I think, pretty well handled. If we can get the outside now also caulked as well, I think that would do a significant amount of prevention in terms of hoping to prevent future occurrence. Melissa, are we admitting anything?
Oh, you've covered it very well.
Do we have a sense of what it costs to call Ego Genesis? Who calls in someone else who conducts this process?
So there's a variety of costs that are associated every time. You have the manager cost, the worker cost, all of that. It's all different. A small event like this could cost maybe about $2,000 for one of them, maybe. Jem has not billed for the last few visits, so I don't anticipate a bill from them for this because the caulking was their work. But we do pay the consultant.
To be clear, we're not going to pay for insufficient work. And Melissa, I talked about this. The work we're contributing to the whole, and we expect them to fulfill their end of contract and do the work. So we're not going to tell them, oh, it's needed work. And if not, it's on the revenue. And then the last piece on our report is just a quick update on enrollment. So our enrollment numbers as of today are trending upwards. We have seven hundred and thirty-five total students, two ninety-seven at Morris, four thirty-eight at secondary level. And of those students, just a hair under forty percent are chosen. Thirty-nine change of students that are choosing for this time.
Three day off or a change?
That's three day off. It's about the same. I don't have that many statistics right now. It does sound like it's pretty similar. It's definitely higher than it's been any Monday night here. So every Monday, we run this data, and it's been continuing to trend positively. I think if we have interviewed the movement district, also students that are maybe been back to us from burrowed in schools or all their private school placements, coupled with obviously, you know, choice. But we still have a waitlist that every grade levels are choicest. It's not that we just try to totally back them for choice. So we are getting everything. And I don't know if you can, I can certainly circle back and give you any information.
That's okay.
Yeah, I wanted to just wonder, are we recapturing some students who joined a one-school before last year, like to Mary or some other educational opportunity last year, and then probably some of those students?
I think all of the high schools did. That wins have already been one of the programs. Not sure about that.
Yes, and then I'll give you some feedback. If you're interested, we can ask you another option last year.
Okay, then moving on to new business, we have Dr. Lawson has prepared a universal routine COVID signature policy. Essentially, we want employees go through full testing. It will be offered starting September seventh. He had a discussion on the day with everyone in the association that we have resources to stop them. And so I guess we're even on all the way policy. And for vaccinations. And it had, yes, there were suggestions that it might be even official that actually tested. It's going to be a weekly thing. We're going to get paid, it's going to be on the table today. And that seemed like a good option. Round to this policy, there are our discussions. So if you want to get the discussion going, I guess I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the universal COVID nineteen testing of our public school employees. And that's definite.
I have a question. Do you have a break?
We don't have a pandemic vaccination policy. This would be, you know, this would be a placement for, not places, but happen. This would be always moved, and if you were if you could be on quicker than vaccination, if we felt that was if there's a person you want to go.
I would move that we agree with the universal COVID nineteen testing of Lennox Public School for discussion.
I appreciate the balance, I think, and the work they did. They were completely because of the fact that there are some people that can't be vaccinated. So we're really trying to get at is whether non-people are testing positive for COVID or any of the variants, and for, and bring that to other people. It's because of this policy, it gets to the heart of that, including so many people who've turned to the vaccine people. So I think, and that's the issue that we're trying to get to, which is to prevent the spread. And this is the most effective way to, I think. Wait a minute. And also continue, I hope, I think it's more of an aspirational to help families and individuals who are struggling with getting COVID vaccine. That we help them do that. My understanding is, obviously, but last year for people who had obtained the vaccine and taken it, that's considered appropriate through a time off to get a vaccine and or have some time if you have to potentially be the best. So I think that's now is to be encouraging as much as possible. That's an issue for those who are not in the program. And then also testing to see if we have people who are testing positive. There are ways to go toward the direction that we want to go.
People love to also help the vaccine clinic. We've talked about that, and there is some opportunity to that. So let's do that, whether we want to do it for students or and that is that, and with the whole community, either way, I think it's a great you know, call it out. And the other thing, to your point about missing work in a lawful time, that would also then apply when, you know, you have folks that are going to have to get booster. It sounds like at least two of the protocols that say it's fully available for all of them. We know at least now that people are making booster shots sometime, most likely. So if that is the case, again, we'll work to make sure people have the time to get that.
Does that question agree? The testing that we're offering, is it part of the DCE testing that students are also getting in? Or is it some other piece of getting to?
It's the same testing that DCE is operating with. Absolutely, and we're going to, you know, also employees. Talking to the folks from the association, they said, oh, it's great. It's super easy to pass, I can just swing by my way to my classroom. It literally takes just a few moments. So they were very receptive to it. They thought that it was, you know, they base it and create minimal disruptions. So for us, we've not followed that until now. Is it, is it? So it's full testing, right? It'll be, we're going to have samples, we put them into the pools, right? It's universal in scope with its application, saying that anyone who runs across has to do it. So we're universally applying full testing. So what is that? Every teen needs, or part time, or every, all cylinders, so. So I think it would be the policy, we're looking at all LPS employees, anyone who's employed by the district in any capacity, we have to provide a good time and see.
But we can certainly offer. Sorry, because they're not, they're not going to support our employees, but we can certainly offer.
Well, we will have some bus drivers who are employees.
Yeah. And then, who will be driving? This is actually the third. So we have some discussion throughout that, and we're thinking the best mechanism to track is at the level of, just hoping to, you know, administration is a big help. That was something that's a, well, we're currently trying to track.
We need further discussion. I do feel that this was a great compromise suggestion with this data that you probably think I do not view last week. I think this is, I understand, because it's kind of solves the problem. And I think it gives, I think, protects us better. It's just requiring vaccination, knowing that some people are vaccinated. So I think this is positive.
Yeah, I think that was one, one concern, right? Is that we do know there are cases. The other side of it was that, we didn't start our staff, I don't know how many folks were vaccinated, we're looking at somewhere around ninety-eight percent of our staff are already vaccinated. So for us, a vaccination policy doesn't seem like it was going to catch a whole lot of infection rate, because there were probably people that had infections already. So we felt that this was probably a way to heighten our ability to ensure safe environments as best as we possible. It probably would be more effective than trying to chase down those last few folks with vaccines.
Do we have a motion on the floor to approve the policy? Do you need further discussion? And we'll call for a vote.
Aye. Aye. David, you're on.
I'm on.
Brian, you're on.
Thank you. Thank you. So now we're at the lacrosse program. We have a proposal from Black and Bill's side. Roger, Dean Roger.
I'm ready, but maybe they need to go. Right. And just to, these many things just had their, really just for the difference people. And we'd be glad to.
Would it be helpful to give an overview?
Yeah, what? Just be honest with you.
Sure.
Yes. That kind of turned toward the areas. And this is, you can step in countables.
The microphone doesn't work well.
They had the time to, you know, to consider this. I fully recognize that. So there's a reason that I hope to, you know, get our proposal in front of all of you. And that is, it's in the spirit of being proactive. You know, we've talked a lot about COVID, obviously. And my wife and I moved back to the virgins, back to Lennox specifically. One of the primary reasons that I was opportunity. And we feel as though upon excuse, we're a tremendous job of providing good opportunities across the learning spectrum. Kids are going to great schools. They also have all sorts of extracurricular activities. So it's made a huge difference. COVID, of course, is the, is the opportunity. It's taken away all sorts of things in our study. And the group of, for a part of this past winter, started taking kids just to get them moving down West Hill where there's an indoor sports facility. And we spent about two months of bringing kids down to play lacrosse. And it was great. It got them moving. It got them, you know, it sort of got them talking to one another, you know, a lot of positives. And then we sort of rolled right into lacrosse season, which is a co-op. It has been for some years. Also in Mon, even more recently. And unexpectedly, there was no boys team. And so in place of letting that sort of fall to the wayside, a group of coaches and parents and lots of volunteers got together and essentially ran what we call the club team, but it was, we played other varsity teams. And we sort of picked up the roles. The kids had a great time. They didn't have a good time, they had a great time. A lot of things can get lost in sports, but these guys were really fun. We rolled right through the summer. We played over in Saratoga and had two days, five games. And the kids are really into it. The sad reality at the end of the summer was we lost a couple of kids. And that was because opportunities, you know, settled with your team. But a big contributor to that was sports. They wanted to be massively sure that they were going to be able to play sports at some point in the next year. And in some cases, I know from personal experience, that boarding schools. My wife and I moved back to Lennox specifically, as I said, Lennox because we feel like it's a full package. I, fortunately, unlike my sister, many of my closest friends, I didn't read the region. It's not a standard, but it's a good one. And that was because we lost our hockey, our triathlon. And, you know, I had ten years of hockey experience and it just made sense to go off to boarding school at the time. I think for the kids that we have here, it's not just Lennox, it's all of Berkshire County. There is no team in the South of Pittsfield right now in Berkshire. And I mean, we're playing lacrosse. We are surrounded by accident lacrosse, and it's both leagues, but we go right down to Atlanta. But we are literally between two hotbeds, Palm Meadow and the Miami Valley. So I'm talking to coaches in both areas all the time. We're part of the marines, they actually, they're directionally trying to be our, basically our best. But for opportunity, some of our kids that are talented, kids that really just want to play, would never be known to any of those coaches. And they might be sitting on a couch. And that's the worst reality, which we've all read. The researcher reports about seventy percent. So the reason I wanted to get in front of you was to try to put people's minds at ease that in the absence of an active boys program, co-op, and self-coverage. And there would be a viable option. Dave Q has been wonderful, and he's spent a lot of time with us. And it's not just me, it's a whole series of volunteers at the youth level, other coaches. And we have a, we have a strong vested interest in doing sure that those families. For those of you that had the time to go through the detail of the proposal, our proposal is that kids can play lacrosse. It just so happens that, you know, in league, there is, you know, football is extremely popular, so a lot of the boys might be working. This is an innovative, to my mind, this is an innovative way of structuring a co-op in that, you know, league and Lennox work very closely together to shoulder the group sponsoring both. It brings, I happen to believe that we might have worked very closely together. It's as good as it gets. But I really believe that aside from the vast popularity of lacrosse, for those of you that don't know, the only major league, you know, sports to create a random league in probably the last, you know, ten, maybe longer, ten years, is major league lacrosse. It's incredibly dynamic. Participation rates have been almost even in Massachusetts. We are steady and swift in those right. What's interesting is now that this year, volume of people who are playing is the number of high schools that have been in town. And in Massachusetts, along with the last ten years, And in Massachusetts, along with the last ten years, seventy percent of high schools who play lacrosse is over sixty-five percent for girls. And it's grown between thirty-nine and fifty-three percent in terms of the number of high schools that have decided to apply. So I, I'm not coming to you to say, you know, lacrosse is something I love. You know, geez, I hope you guys don't see it that way. I just see a real opportunity for our town, especially schools, to build its health and has a true college preparatory school. Really a lot of our, a lot of our names. To be able to retain and, and attract new families that you're attracting, I believe. It is, you know, happens to be a sport that's very popular, um, and, you know, wants people to love it or go to this. I think it will play a meaningful role in terms of getting people to consider Lennox as well as the surrounding area. And, uh, we already have a team for next year. We already have all the kids, seventy percent of them from Lennox. There's a very good chance that we'll be oversubscribed. And that falls in line with what we had this last spring. So it just so happens that boys who go to, uh, Lennox, many of our subscriptions, participation. So, um, what we're asking the committee to do is to consider adopting, uh, a boys team in conjunction with the Lennox. So that it's an, so that it's an opportunity for, for all the kids. And, um, we think it'd be a great addition to school spirit. And, you know, the last thing that I think is relevant, uh, for those of you that really have sports is that there, there are sports where, my daughter says it's all, I mean, there are sports like basketball where if I just don't get to be tall, I'm probably going to be left out of this. So I should probably just drop out. Um, lacrosse is remarkably attractive, not just amongst genders, but it's remarkably attractive. There's no reason to starve. There is no issue. There is no, there is no person who's naturally going to be a hero. It's a team where people collaborate. I think we need good for Lennox. I know Dave's done a lot of work, so, you know, I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that.
Okay, I'm certainly gonna give you a bit of much support. I, to backtrack a little bit, um, just my learning here is the, the first, first of all, first of all, uh, the first of all, was, of course, I'm sure like every other athlete was worse last fall. But I did, I, I also work with the E Ds, uh, Keith Thompson, the E D at Lee. They, they, I, I provided for you on the back page of my sheet, all existing co-ops we currently have. Co-ops are critically in danger. I want to give our student athletes opportunities to participate in sports they want to participate in. So Lee has had, Lee has been hosting Boys and Girls Lacrosse for a number of years now. It did, it wasn't mine, you know, floating over the league, uh, mainly on participation. Uh, the last spring, um, they thought they were going to have seven athletes drive Boys and Girls Lacrosse. It turned out they were not. An athlete hadn't played before, but really turned out as a district, they put the tool in and everything else was, the district couldn't really afford to, uh, pay for a team for their students. And they made the decision there that they were going to use their funds, another way to support their students. So of course, that left a gap for our lacrosse players at Lennox, uh, the good majority of that team, but normally, um, yes, we did lose one student. I couldn't promise that student, um, for in their school year that we would have lacrosse at Lennox. I couldn't make that promise. But I did promise I would do, do due diligence and determine if it was a viable option. So that's what I've been doing. I've been asking a lot of questions. I just had breakfast with Kevin Downer. One of the talking points, uh, Mr., could I have one, maybe for baseball? We only have so many bases. So I asked Coach Down at breakfast with him Saturday, and I said, what do you think? Let's be transparent. What do you think of lacrosse and its implications for baseball? He wasn't concerned. We talked a lot about kids' interests, what kids usually do, and based on what he sees as ballplayers right now in the system, he doesn't think it's good. Okay, that's good. Cause I really don't want to create a program that's going to, so a program like baseball has been a big part of Lennox for a long time. So then the next thing I need to do, ask questions, is I need to, I asked other E Ds, uh, you know, what, what are the, you know, real, you know, what are the real classroom challenges with lacrosse, all which I felt that we could encounter as a school. Um, I met with Keith Thompson and Principal Frank down at Lee today, and I didn't want to necessarily want to take over a co-op without talking to them about it. They had an investment in our community there, um, coaches, parents, athletes, administration. I just don't want to pull a rug on our, in Boys and Girls Lacrosse down at Lee without talking to them and seeing it. It was their, it was their stance as we sat together that was, it was very good timing for Lennox to take over Boys and Girls Lacrosse. Uh, leave, leave with the Girls and Girls Lacrosse programs, which is very vibrant within their community. We have a number of girls that play lacrosse. So for Lee, it's a good time for us to listen to the team. We talked about equipment costs, that's all, Charles, I mean, um, zero chain, we have all the, the, the all type of lacrosse helmets, equipment. And, uh, we're, we're now a lead, it's important that you have helmets from the team, so we want to give to our school. And we have uniforms that were just recently purchased, black uniforms with an L. And that, so they're willing for us to give a second, take over. So I said, okay, we got uniforms. I think Melissa Fulkowski is a double thumbs up. And we got the equipment, double thumbs up. I've got a booster plug that, uh, that sticks to me over and over again, that they're more than willing to donate funds to, will help offset an initial cost. So from Lee's perspective, it's good for us, good for them, very good timing. To represent some of the research, absolutely, we would host, we would have my member, my member, Lee. And I could see eventually our team be skipped out. Be very good. Uh, we'll have, we'll have interest with the staff for players that generally a lot of them sit out in the spring. It's beneficial for the admin, the teachers, everybody, the whole community, to keep our kids active in the spring, tied to sports and tied to their academics, which is very important for me. So we seem like we, we started off with a very strong fall, we have a very strong winter, tying up there with athletics, but then the spring kind of falls off a little bit at the end of the year. But having lacrosse being a big part of our school, I can see that continuing into June and being a win-win for students and teachers in years. So I put together some costs, you know, what is the true cost? And, um, one of the things that I was, I would say, this was an idea that was really centered with me a few years back as a D, is why is the host school for a co-op team always hosting games? So, so since that, um, Lennox players playing at Lee, we put out the football game here, but I told Keith, we should be able to host lacrosse games so our kids allow us to see the class. And the benefit is, vice versa. So one of the things with this cost is that I've talked to Carl down in, uh, my, you know, reached out to Josh Kim, and I, I reached out to Keith. They're, they're willing to host one or two games during the season. So instead of hosting eight home games, we would host maybe four or five, and they would host each one. It would be great. We would have some games at our lights, we have games on Lee and so forth. So that would increase, I think that's been driving for us. It's not our physicality at those schools. So when all the kids are come from the other schools, just playing at Lee, the student body doesn't see. It's not in the announcements, it's not a part of the school culture. But if it's at the different sites, it becomes a part of the school culture. And I think the dividend is a district, as far as parents being.
Do we have a playing field?
Yeah, so that was another thing. So I had to go up and I asked, um, man, this colleagues, I said, look, I, I, we have a very strong soccer community here. And I, there's always eyes that bash my neck about using the game. I say, no, especially. So gotta be really careful here. So I had, they mapped out a sixty by ninety field on the upper field. And it's tight, but it would make a good practice field. Can't play a game on it, as I was checking on my same thing, field has to be a hundred and ten long, something. So either A, we'd have to flip it around, um, I had, I had some maps that over, you could flip it around on the upper field, but that would really get into the softball field area. Or as we discussed, we thought, you know what? Let's practice on the upper field. Let's share the, the responsibility of hosting games. We would host four or five in the Jingle Field down below. Maybe have one or two on the varsity field under the lights, it would be fantastic. So I thought the field use on the lower field would be at most five games. So I, and then, you know, I would, as a D, I would, you know, when softball, lacrosse is practicing up there on upper field, I'd have to spend the games and make sure nobody was in each other's way. That would be done very easily. So I think the cost, because of the equipment, that was a baby, because of the equipment and uniform formation, uh, we're looking at paying for fifteen buses, uh, five hours, three hundred per, uh, I did work in, oh, that's the only thing, we're traveling as a home game. We would have, my man pick up the referee fees, which are a hundred and seventy dollars. So I got, my home games at a hundred and seventy dollars. But we would want to, uh, hire a head coach and assistant head coach for the job. Those are the current salaries for the, uh, head coaching and assistant coaching for a total, altogether, not including an E M T, which I was just thinking about Melissa. I'm not sure if we're going to find that E M Ts like we do soccer, but the total will be, uh, in addition of eleven thousand, two thirty-five for this year, this year. That's pretty much, I think with E M Ts, we're probably closer to twelve. To offset the cost, I may or may not be assigning all my fall coaching roles this season. I may save monies there and that right there could cover half the cost this spring. So we, we do want to potentially only have a fifty-five per dollar increase, which is something I talked about.
Yeah, you touched on earlier, but since this program's inception as a high school program, there's been an active booster club. So we're working through that now and, and, but there's several thousand dollars that, it's already in reserve or wherever this next year decides. But in addition to that, um, a number of people have, um, a number of parents, coaches, are, are, have already pledged, um, to contribute funds and also to, to fundraise. Um, and so I've been involved in Lennox youth soccer for, around the board for the last five years, and we actively have scholarships for kids that were, um, families that are challenged economically. So if there's any issue of someone not being able to, for example, state, which typically players pay for themselves, um, we've done it before. We'll already discreetly let it be known to the parents that, that the organization is, it's not any one person in particular, it's just the organization. So I, I want to make it clear that, notwithstanding the equipment, which is wonderful, goals, many other things, um, there was a lot of support to see this program happen. And, um, if there's one available, we're going to do it.
I got a question, um, too. So once, that's initial proposal was in a probably five thousand, I'm going to figure that out, twelve thousand. I'm wondering, when you have a co-op, co-op team, does it fall on the team that's hosting to create?
So I have to break that today. Breaks about ten years in New Hampshire, but principally, you send to New Hampshire, it's worth the cost. It's worth the cost to where it's involved. So we're supposed to split by four, faster to us. So the host school, the, the, the team. The whole idea is, and that's why, that's why it's important to share with you, existing co-ops is to see, um, our neighboring districts, ours share lacrosse, of teams that, like for instance, swimming and, you know, stick your side race swimmers, they go down and do phenomenal. So it's a sharing of expenses, sharing the wealth and the, the, some of the trademarks of our schools with each other's, they don't even show all the salary. So.
From your perspective, would it be the cost, but it would be keeping with, with what other districts have been doing anyway? And we're doing this, not like skiing and.
Yeah, so for, so for instance, Lee Football, that's a lot of money, and we don't pay anything for, for that. So they absorb a huge expense, and we do send, Keith Thompson was saying, they get carefreeing their Lennox fans, athletes that are extra valid. If we're not going to West Carolina's title, if you're just going, can't get going, we have numbers seen as you missed out on the season last fall. We've got some real, it's real contributors, uh, and vice versa, they're going to have contributors in our programs, you do have, one including, uh, the lacrosse this spring. So it's, it's this sharing of, the, the, the premise of commercial accounting for all this is giving every student the ability to do more something they want to be able to. And that, that is what it kind of resonates with. And, um, it makes sense at this juncture to adopt the program. Uh, I think our, my leadership, everyone, every player, remember players we have, our resources, it makes sense for us to, they would still carry on the girls' lacrosse program.
I had a couple of comments. Uh, thank you for the details. I would just review it for myself, if you allow me. Um, I just want to comment on a couple of things. One is, my first familiarity with lacrosse is from the southeast part of Massachusetts, a town called Pembroke, which is not part of our place, called Plymouth. We all went to Plymouth meditation, and we got to learn from, um, native actors who are people of the, we don't know, um, communities, um, other native peoples within that area. They do, if you've been on the meditation or any of the recent years, they have actors. They really do a wonderful job of telling us the past story, native peoples, and bringing it to life in the present. And I think it's just really, really important when we talk about anything in our communities that we remind, that we actually really engage in some good leadership around, um, our history. And what I learned from the native peoples was that lacrosse was created by native peoples. They showed me their version of what lacrosse did. And so for tonight, if we had, since getting late, we had time, if we had technology, I just wanted to share with you a really, really wonderful YouTube, um, video that if you look it yourself, you know, you know, all that YouTube, and it's really, really well done, it's, it's introduced by native peoples. It's their voice speaking about what lacrosse really is. And it is called, um, sorry, is it written down? Wonderful history of the history of lacrosse. So it's called Roots, exploring the history of lacrosse. And I would ask you all to make a note of it and watch it. It's really well done, it took me five minutes, maybe less than that, to watch it. But what is simply talked about, and I understood lacrosse to be, to be going from native peoples who, you know, predate the, the, the Pilgrim Crossing of sixteen twenty, but I didn't really have a date in my mind. So that's what I was looking up. I'm, I'm like that, like to look up history. Um, from what we recognize as a date in North America and Canada, so North America, of native peoples playing lacrosse as early as eleven hundred. I think it's really cool to understand that history. And the person in this, in the present day, a native American talks about, um, history and how it actually has a spiritual history and community history, um, and really was a, I, my personal history of my son, um, and his stepkids playing lacrosse with, um, you and some of you, and I think it's a wonderful sport. I actually really supported a lot with the girls. Kim did a presentation to us a year ago. What I really, really think is important, and I want to just differentiate that with all the respect you're talking about, college prep. So number one, I think kids play sports because of the joy and the physicality of it. It's not really about getting into college, although college is great. So I really want to, want us to kind of check ourselves on this concept that we're more college prep if we let kids play lacrosse, rather than we're more fun because we're playing this great sport, lacrosse, because the history and the spirituality, and it's a really, really great sport, right? So you're passionate about it, and we're all pretty passionate about it, but not solely for the purpose of being, getting into college, right? Like, are some of our kids faced that? Like, am I only doing this like, what would divisional schools? Or am I playing a sport because I feel good and I love it and it's a great experience? I really want us to think a lot about that. And I know, I don't mean that as a. Yeah, and I don't mean that in any way, I can try to over criticize, but I really, really think that specifically to something like, like lacrosse, because it has been adopted into this concept of prep schools and this concept of college, but where it comes from is native peoples. And I think it's really, really important that we understand it. So, um, I have prepared, because your, your, your several pages isn't really like, like something you can do as a motion, so I prepared a motion, um, that I'd like to present, that we can certainly keep discussing, and I'm going to toss it out and give a printed copy to Amy, so that she doesn't have to try and screw it up. I'm going to toss it out and give a printed copy to Amy so that she doesn't have to try and screw it over through one of our motions. And toss these down, Bob. And I'll just say it now and say, I'd like to move that I saw the school, local lacrosse program for boys in grades seven through 12 as eligible and appropriate for MIA rules, regulations. Because we're expecting this to be a JV or varsity, you know, if we have enough students to do JV, we could do that. But right now we're looking at MIA rules, if I'm correct about that. So roll the regulations and we'll invite students to participate from other districts in accordance with existing policies for cooperative sport programming, so that helps us to incorporate that. When a school, public school will consider a simple program for girls if they are no longer able to play. That's not before it right now. As part of the training for lacrosse, students will participate in education about the origins and meaning of the game of lacrosse. As it originated with the culture of native peoples in North America. The curriculum for educating all students about the origins and traditions of the game of lacrosse, reviewed and approved by the superintendent of school or his designated, and said personally will be shared with the physical education department for reviewing possible corporations. I'm, I'm putting this motion, no, it's a motion, so I'll just give anyone seconds. And if I may, just have a little more explanation, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm putting this in here because I really do think, it doesn't have to, we don't have to have a. I just think we have to acknowledge the origins of this sport. And I think that it's an opportunity when we're trying to diversify our curriculum to, in real time, talk about something that's cool and actually is fun and where it comes from. You know, sometimes people talk about, well, we don't have diversity in our history and we don't have this. It's all right here. We just have to look for opportunities to weave it into what we're doing. And I think this is a great opportunity to really talk about who it is, how cool it is. Some of it, they should talk about the native peoples and actually how they made their way from lacrosse. Like the arts department would decide, I'm not telling you to do that. This motion is about supporting lacrosse by allowing a recording with me that the students need to understand where lacrosse is from. And then maybe there's an opportunity in leadership to broaden that within the community and everybody more about it. Because it's very cool and it is from our community. The original native peoples, it was popular in lots of different places. I can't remember the site, but the YouTube video really touches the cool stuff about the reasons where it, where it comes from. It also talks about the more recent history of competitive level, college level lacrosse. Syracuse being one major powerhouse of lacrosse. But the incorporation from, coming from segregated education to including peoples and native peoples in lacrosse, bring them back to support at college level, as well as peoples, people of color. And I learned a little thing, which is that Joe Brown, who's a famous football, Jim Brown, thank you, famous football player, was also a decorated lacrosse player. And I just think that there's a lot of cool stuff to learn. So my one thing is here is about supporting your player, but the addition that is not in your materials is that we actually included some first time around where it comes from.
One of the things that happened is our kids. Lacrosse camp. And there's still a significant Native American population. And at the last camp you went to, there were Native Americans that came and actually were building stakes. And as he was building the stakes, he was, was explaining to them. And he taken our kids down to what is effectively the lacrosse hall of fame around. But most of it is about this history of transcribing. So I think that would be great, but I do think it's possible to bring in almost like best speakers. You know, someone that actually comes in and speaks to the team. I'd love to get a bunch of kids to get on there and just see that history. But I think there's a few mark where this is.
I just do want to say that there will be recurring costs to the operating budget. I just want you to know that the coaches will come out of our budget. It's about 8,000, that'll continue to increase as the years go on, but that's a small number. On the uniforms every five years or so. But Dave and I have a plan to offset some of the costs with revolving. Coaches would still come out of the operating, uniforms mostly would come out of the operating. We'll receive fees from the kids that are playing. And we can use revolving for transportation and some of the refs. But you will see costs in the next budget cycle.
You see that need, you know, in football, they also, they also get gate receipts, right? So is there any plan to get, to charge for lacrosse, given particularly the way it's, as another way to possibly offset some of the costs?
I mean, right now, I mean, I see it as, as, as a way to support the program and also communicate it out, what's happening with lacrosse programs located. I can see us hosting, we have to play a tournament game home. We can play under the lights, I don't think we're going to do this. So yeah, I mean, a, a tournament game receives, well, if it goes to the tournament though, it does go to the MIA. Also to say, the MIA has to approve this. So I see it as being approved, but you can approve it and that the PDIC can say, probably, keep it. That's not going to happen, given that no one wants to, to play. So that's something, I'm, once you approve that, I'll go to PDIC, get them to change. Probably restructure the league script for lacrosse. So we'll be putting them in the league. That's why I added the transportation cost to be really worth. And, you know, as, as time goes by, the recurring costs, again, that was a concern with L R Ds is just the recurring costs. But as the program grows, we'll be evaluating, maybe bring it, maybe start.
Six months only time, right?
It's one goal only given a nine position.
So then, how big is the roster?
Well, so right now, we already have 16 kids that definitely wish to play less than that this past year. I shouldn't just say, I'm short on eyes, but I shouldn't just say that this team of less than 15 kids, we did beat this field twice. They're already sitting with ninth and 10th graders. So I, I, these are some pretty talented kids that really should be fostered. But the roster that Lee had two years ago was 20 boys. I, I think we could have as well, but we don't want to eviscerate the youth program. So we don't want to take, we used a couple last year, but we don't want to take eighth graders that should get more playing time, that haven't fully developed physically and sort of throw them, you know, into a game. So Matt Colmer, who's done an incredible job with, to lead youth lacrosse, has really done a great job of keeping kids from third through eighth grade to nine. And so I think we'll fill with ninth, 12th graders. We tend, you know, we're trending young, so we get a lot of ninth.
Oh, I know it's a wonderful proposal and I, I really appreciate also how much passion comes through for just creating this opportunity for, for kids to play a sport that, that they clearly love. So I'm, I'm very supportive of, of creating the program. I'm a little bit frustrated that the motion tries to combine that with a curriculum mandate. I just don't think that's. In, in general, my impression is that the school committee does not set specific curriculum mandates for specific programs, even academically, let alone as, as part of a sport. And so I would welcome a discussion of, of how we might do more teaching about lacrosse and native peoples in, in the schools. But I would prefer, and I think would be better practice for the committee to have clean votes on, on the proposals before us. So I, I would introduce an amendment to just strike everything from the motion beginning with as part of the training for lacrosse. Students will participate in education about the origins, et cetera, et cetera. This would allow us to vote on the program and then of course we could also discuss any sort of curriculum that we might distribute for the school.
Well, currently.
So we're discussing the motion.
So if I could just mention about the issue of the amendment is, I, I think it's appropriate, you have a sport now, such as lacrosse, that has such a history of native peoples that is often not even mentioned, that we need make an effort when we're, you know, our strategic, Fred talks about diversity and inclusion, thinking in terms of how we talk about sport and where it's all part of. It's important. The concept of, Mr. President, a clean motion. I don't really know how, how in some ways it would be an inappropriate or dirty motion to say that we are going to move forward with living up to our values and saying we're going to start talking about where it's come from and what. There's nothing in our, our, our sports policies comes from lots of different places, lots of different traditions. We are trying in a way to provide opportunities for kids to do lots of different things. And I think saying that we'll do lacrosse and we're going to offer curriculum about it is actually an opportunity for. I didn't hear anybody complain about the idea of learning about it. I think the concept in the amendment is that it shouldn't be in our policy. I mean, the entire program is not in this policy. We, as policy savers are saying, we support a program for the sport of lacrosse. And we support the idea of having a real understanding about what that sport is about, as opposed to what it looks like today and where it actually came from. I think that actually puts forward our values, puts forward what we're looking for. The nuts and bolts of what actually happens with lacrosse program is left to the administration. The nuts and bolts of what's taught is put up by the administration. How we handle our sports is all part of administration. But having a motion that says we support this sport and we support having a true understanding about its origins because it is entirely part of native peoples. We, I just watched like several YouTube videos about it, learned about it and learned about it directly from, you know, education at Plymouth plantation and other places where it's talked about, as you mentioned in the camps. It, it's really a very important part of this. And to just make it like, oh yeah, now we play lacrosse, it doesn't have any history. I think is, is missing a great opportunity to really step up the role. You know, the amendment's out there and we'll totally vote on it, but that's the reason why it's important. But that stays.
So Veronica, I want to see the, the mandate to have a curriculum, or is it the right? We're changing the world of the athletics. We're now making that athletic event educational curriculum approved by the superintendent. It will require teachers. Our coaches we do not treat or certify as teachers. If they're teaching curriculum, I would assume they need to be teachers. That assumption, but, but that would be my, that'd be my first problematic issue. I think it's great to learn about it and I think it's great to. If the kids get to play it, they should get interested in the product, do some research. It sounds like one of the boosters that really liked the idea. I just, for, for us as a school committee to say, you must teach this as part of the curriculum piece. I don't quite know how we do that in this state.
And I was just going to say just a few about athletic director, he is.
You know, and improving the program, like Veronica, I appreciate bringing this very important topic up. A lot of times we do something without teaching why. But as your athletic director, I would see to it that I would be active with the school, reaching out to the arts department, history department, seeing it, through ways that connect to our curriculums to history of lacrosse. Maybe try to line up for a season, for a season starting, the guest speaker. I think it's a board. No, I, I don't currently mandate a curriculum to any team that are athletes. Each, each sport, I agree there's a difference here, that each sport has origin, that's not necessarily discussed. So it brings up a good point, and maybe we should look into lacrosse and, you know, all those sports is, you know, take a minute within our communication out of the families to just share out the origins. But I would, given what you've said, I'll make a point that this all is a positive place for spring and trying to incorporate something that's futureful with it. Lacrosse program, so there's, there's a whole idea there.
Is lacrosse.
No, it's, it's a costly. Please just break some.
We should be eliminating everything past, if I'm correct, Mr. Pass, past Lee public schools period. We want to eliminate the rest of everything else.
We have, I mean. We don't set. That's my question.
I think it just leaves it up to the superintendent as to what the spoken word that it is, but the concept of connecting it. I don't know. Okay, let's take a vote on the amendment. So a yes, opposed, or赞同 amendment, we, we strike from the language, starting as part of the training. From there on. Negative. And if no, we, as you want to leave that one. So. Right, yes.
Mine.
April 5. Christine. May. May 5. Then. The amendment carries for two. I'd like to make.
Where did you, did you vote?
Didn't vote. Sorry.
Where's my ticket? Going to go to math.
So I would like to make an amendment to the main language. Lennox public schools, this is similar property to girls, if they are no longer able to play in the lacrosse program currently. It was the, the, the program before us is for the boys program. If at some point, those programs comes forward and it is a, we're bringing that forward.
I'm going to second. Right, is that part of the test placing under procedure?
Any discussion on that? You have nine more.
I. I. I.
Okay. They all vote on the main motion.
People, I have a couple of questions. I didn't know you seconded, so I.
I'm sorry.
So I, I just have, you know, a couple of clarifications. I've heard a high school program.
Yes.
Potential JV somewhere down the road.
Yes.
So then there are kids in the community who are in, or are currently in the eighth grade and lower or in the club program. So shouldn't they even be in Lennox, the, the preference is to keep them in a development, in a development program? We wouldn't put eighth graders, it's purely a high school program, this is.
Yeah, the way it works is the four of the old two, like we have a seven through 12, and all four of us. It may be into 12, it's, I want to say nine. Of course, the roster, it'd be filled just as we always build from the first four teams that we try out. We get to a point where tryouts warrant a lot of participation. Then we got to look at, and I don't know, not right away, but you know, we'll have to look at the number and say, well, I got 20 extra kids besides our varsity. The coaches after the sign is, do you want to stay with the feeder system, you know, the club teams? Or do we want to adopt the team? Because the benefit is, as we saw with COVID, is when you have a team in house, you have more control. That forces more impact into the student's education. So if we can foster a team, that way it's involved. It, it really goes off for upper middle school students, lower high school students to be involved. Again, it makes their days strong in upper schools. It's, it would be a seven to 12, but it would mostly upper grade students and then as a rest, if it formed into a JV program.
So my, my other question, when you said field utilization. What is our current field utilization in the spring of those lower fields of the JV soccer field and of those?
So the fields, the fields generally dormant, the JV and varsity soccer fields all spring. Every once in a while, baseball, uh, before the fields are ready. Apparently, after the fall, uh, season, those fields are, are resting until about the fall. Every once in a while, this summer, I'll, I'll. Every once in a while, this summer, L Y C uses our JV field to host a team game, two, three or four of those in courses. The upper field is used quite extensively by our soccer community for L Y C, ten, twelve. So there's going to be some navigating spring to work around their schedules. They may have practice later after lacrosse. So that field's going to still be, with the sun setting later, it'll still be viable to have a lacrosse stadium, youth soccer team later. The youth soccer also plays more in the weekends, on Saturdays and Sundays, so not having games during the week as much.
So what's the importance of that resting period in the spring for those fields?
Well, one of the big, big things within lacrosse, when talking to the AVs, one was what the soccer field just get destroyed with lacrosse. There's three main areas on a field of lacrosse game that get really, is the two goal areas where the goal is constantly moving and where they do a faceoff in the center. So I've talked to Matt about the, and Melissa about the likelihood that we would, since spring is late here, we would probably not host home games later in the spring because the fields just have to be ready. It wasn't ready for after a dry winter. I couldn't play a soccer game on that field until after April. We played the last game of the season on that field on Saturday. So our field, the fields are just not ready for the sun, that towards the winter, really late. So what I'm going to do is they do use on the schedule all our home games in the second half of the season. And Monument generally can host sooner, they may host a home game for us sooner. Maybe two, Lee, same thing, their field's getting more sun, and then we would host later in the season. So there's a plenty for that. Also, we talked about having money to set aside pretty straight to replace the sod in those three areas of the JV field that need, the heavy use areas. So I let Matt know that because I can see that, I can see at the end of the season, three patches in one of the, a dress map. We just patched, we sodded the four goal areas of the soccer fields during the colder time, so banish that. And the fields are in pristine condition right now, so...
Because soccer field, it's like a tennis court, right? You know, you need a, you need a, you need a uniform surface because it's actually part of the game. I mean, I wholly support the lacrosse program. I, I have serious concerns. We've spent a lot of money on that field.
Well, there's, well, there's a couple of considerations that I should just bring up. One is, a lacrosse game is forty eight minutes. In lacrosse, you're not... So, so the actual screaming activity doesn't happen. As Dave has pointed out, there's three areas. Where people take offense off in the center of the field, I, I don't think you might have different opinions, but I've never seen even real signs of wear and tear on the fields we've played over the last five, 10 years. They do get worn where the two goals are.
One goal is sixty wide.
It's not twenty forty. This is a very, very isolated and small...
Yeah, we're alone.
Yeah, so, so you know that, you know, so there are two pretty small spots on a lacrosse field. You know, and I guess the other consideration, because I know we've been talking a lot about equity inclusion, inclusion, it's just that, I'm hopeful that in time that, you know, that the community looks at people that choose to play lacrosse as having the right to the fields sponsored by the school as people that choose to play soccer. As I said, I've been on the soccer board for five years, so I'm a huge proponent of, of you, you know, get to play soccer. But I don't see necessarily why they have to choose between one and the other. You know, one shouldn't necessarily take this back to another, you know.
No, I'm not saying that at all. What I'm saying is, is are we prepared to have, well, I guess I'm saying two things. Should the, you know, we know how, when we're in the spring, and if we host a game, and the field gets torn up, are we prepared to repair it for our soccer season? Or I thought I read it somewhere in the, in the motion, like, in B C C, as a potential, I think that?
There's, there's, David, there's another option too for games. Is, can I get them scheduled? Like, I could easily schedule softball games to be on different nights. And there's no reason in the world it's actually worth this. Take the wall outside, take the wall, our lacrosse field, or the wall. We want to go with the again field softball. It's nice about that if you go on the side, it's about two minutes, it's not a few seconds. So if we needed to, our fields are all filled with this, and then we could say, no, we're just going to play a game on the field. And we just line it, we just do it. So we've already talked about putting mounting up the trap, the walls in different spots. But we can easily, easily elongate that softball upper field to whole field and not even use a hole. So it'll just be a matter of taking home run fence down.
It has to be a war.
Softball, they're going to put the home run fence out and they're going to have some straight lines on their softball field.
There will still be maintenance. There will still be maintenance charges. We'll have to make sure that the field is playable and safe, so we will still have maintenance fees. Even if it's this way or this way.
So, so the problem with the spring fields of lacrosse, the thing with soccer field, we play on it in the fall. It's been in the sun, it's been growing green, it's been watered all summer. It's in pristine shape. Imagine that if your backyard in the spring, your kids decided to play football. You would very quickly have paths around, you have your base warm, and the areas, whenever you get a case of grass because you're constantly wearing it. That's what would happen on our fields, on the lower fields. You have these spaces that will have a chance to generate grass and ferment correctly and grow. Because it would, so that's, that's where the, that's where the fields get torn up. If the lacrosse looked dangerous in the fall, they would look no different than our soccer fields and our soccer scene. That's the benefit of the grass.
Correct me if I'm wrong, that's where the resting comes in.
Yes.
You have to rest the fields, not have anyone playing on them for a period of time. Very, and usually it's during the summer months, and then you do your maintenance to get them ready to go for the season.
The only point is, we need to ensure that they're, you know, so everyone's good field.
Right now...
We need some point again too.
Right now, the lower fields are, this time the upper field is not. I feel confident based on this, my, I've been there eight years, I've coached it. An upper field can host games in the spring. And as the spring progresses, we get grass grown, extended to the soccer team, like April of the day. I got a whole month and a half of the season left, we can start hosting games. There's only a total of eight full season. Meanwhile, all the sites are hosting, trying to get down to four of these four games. I think it'll work, you know, minimize risk to our fields. But I want to tell the, the lacrosse community to understand, what I wanted them to understand is, attempting on lacrosse, we're not just going to give you privilege to use the soccer fields. It's a different time of the year. We're always careful, that's why they look as good as they do. We have space on the upper field. I see Matt's point, but, you know, we can definitely get a field up top for a lacrosse field, get it looking pretty nice, then it's a win-win for both programs. We've got soccer, lacrosse. I feel pretty confident that we can make this work.
I think it's a term that comes to early season games because you don't have...
Yeah, they do.
B C C, they opened the new, the COVID, the turf field and E C C, they are being used by the Pittsfield teams this year more. If we reach out to them, say, if we host a couple of lacrosse games, or be a fee, two hundred and fifty, I don't know what it'd be. But they're, as a, as a college, they're trying to do more youth soccer campus for their visibility. So if we reach out to them a lot of those again, they'd probably say yes.
Does B C D have a field?
B C D, they vote for field.
I mean...
The problem there, at least currently, is that they, they're not having access.
We did play games at B C C last year during the spring, and they were very reasonable. They worked with us, they, they were great to work with and wanted us there.
It was a win-win because they really want students that are coming on our campus. And it was a win-win for them. It worked out great. And it did give a lot of kids the visibility to the campus and it was, and they, the charge was not that much at all. Realized when you're building a turf field, I believe.
Did you say a big charge state, those were a game during turf early in the season?
Yes, yes. And I think the beginning of lacrosse, that's the first time we watch, we just have B C C host our own games.
That's what matters, we need to have better coordination. Anyway. Veronica, I'd like to call the question.
Okay, so the motion now is just the first part of the motion for Lennox Public Schools to proper sports programming. All in favor of the main motion to proper lacrosse?
Let's, I'm gonna...
Thank you.
I don't know if you like.
We have the second reading of the school admissions policy, you will recall it. There's a question of whether it's a carryup left on, and here's the... Are you going to address this?
Sure, so the original policy was really, I had the previous school board just in public seat at the time. Just adding the language, pertaining to individuals who are homeless or who have, you know, certain status. That then would only had paragraphs one and two, you see the parentheses there. So if people value the, would get bachelor, we'll ask to so to me, sorry, what's that, right? It's to so to be C M R twenty six. And there is a third paragraph that does appear there now, it may not have historically. And then new paragraph, that it appears in the general law or the regulation anyway, extends the protections to folks in talking around the gender identity. So that's the other piece that's been added since the official document policy. I mean, that's a first step. So, there's a third paragraph. So now, literally, that comes with this, that...
Okay, so, I would say the motion to approve policy J F of school admissions.
Make the motion to approve policy J F school admissions.
Let's take a look. Is there any further discussion? Can we now, or a yes?
Aye.
Aye.
Five to nine?
Okay, the last part of the thing, and as you know, we didn't, we didn't finish our retreat. But we're thinking it might be possible to do a meeting. If we do anything, we treat it like five to nine, rather than try to take a stab, ready, get on the ball. We're trying to do something from five to nine. Does that, we will ask for dates sometime later, but does that concept work for people or people that, people have issues with that?
For holding a soccer game?
And we will...
We'll have caffeine and snacks. We'll make the snacks.
Say good morning.
So we'll propose some dates and try to get something. And then the other thing was, subcommittees, although it's time to think, to begin to actually have subcommittees, human resources is already the main because of various reasons why we tend to be. I believe Chris Dean is chairman of governance leadership. I'm chairman of finance and human resources. Veronica is chairman of school culture, teaching and learning.
That's me.
So, you know, there are, they know. We didn't do anything last year, we had an occasion, but we started to... And so we do feel it's time to kind of re-get those going because of the connections to the various sections, plan that they, they have to. And this is all work to do. So, again, we try, and I don't know if this will really be practical, but we tried to back to do on some nights, back to back, subcommittees, and hold them to an hour each. And, and there's, you know, there's a lot of important work to do in an hour that, that may not be realistic, but we think it's worth cheering for because if everyone's, you know, they'll maybe try to meet in meetings and really get focused. But we tried to move back to back, it's the same people who are involved in two committees. And obviously, that doesn't work perfectly because there's no, there are no two committees that, that three of us are on. But we'll, we'll do the best we can with Amy's, you know, skills. Yeah, yeah, and there are five subcommittee meetings. And so the idea would be to try to hold one hour meetings, in some cases, back to back if possible. And to, to try to keep it to an hour. As I said, some of the issues are pretty important, and we did vote two, but, and then at the end of each meeting, try to schedule the next one. So Amy doesn't then have to go through the process of trying to reschedule the next one. So, I put up to committee chairs to, or to Amy, and again, I think we will leave perhaps two weeks out, possibly, for the first subcommittee. Okay, Steve, what was your word?
We'll be talking about this another time. The thing I'm concerned about already is, is as a chairperson of the committee, we're not going to put in some room schedule, and when it comes to school culture, I don't know how I'd do that without anybody from the school. So it seems to me that we should schedule the first meeting, be with Dr. Boslin and the admin team, admin team, whatever, Dr. Boslin thinks most helpful, to talk about what is, what is, what I, what I, what I feel like, at least in my subcommittee, which is school culture, is to talk about what's actually happening and figure out what is the most targeted by the school committee to be involved. And that seems to me to be like meeting one. And then because it would involve school personnel, we would be looking at what we work for them with our subcommittee, with no disrespect anyway to Amy's focus and ability and helpfulness of trying to get a schedule. And then, of course, she's got to stay in the loop because these are public meetings, they have to be identified as such. But I guess my feeling about it is, for example, when we did pulling task force, I was there. In that, we had a cohort that was on that committee, and then before we met, there were shirt numbers of school leaders on it, because that was part of the sub. So I'm just proposing that maybe, at least in my anyway, that before we're pulling together our first meetings, we can talk about our data and then think about what makes sense because I believe we'll be including, I just don't know how I would have a functioning committee without members of the, of the, of the I M and staff, wherever else we, ultimately chooses to assist with that. So if it's okay with, Mr. Chairman, I'm thinking, if mine, we just schedule the first, if that would be okay?
Yeah, well, that was the idea, boys.
Can I ask a question? If it refers to chair of the school culture, many of us have advocated that.
Oh, I know.
David Grum has been in the path.
We...
Love the vision.
I mean, we did a new staff, we finished, am I incorrect, there was a memo that identified the committees, and he lifted the chair, he sent out, so it was sent out, I received it.
I went back, it wasn't clear, just listed the...
I have, I have a list and a list of everyone.
We did list him in, you know, it's...
Okay.
That was the past time, as I did, per se.
Yeah, I didn't see that, I did look back.
Okay.
Whatever you want to do. Something can change on the future.
We're a team, this is, let's talk about what you want to do, we'll figure it out. We're a team, many as a committee, that's what we are. We're together.
What I do think, the first one would be, we need subcommittee members. And then after that, if, yes, after that would be, will you need to do the work?
Amy, I don't know.
So that's all I wanted to say was just we need to get those roles.
Correct.
And now I would accept the motion.
I'll second that.
So soon. Davis.
Aye.
David.